Good evening. We're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. This will be the City of Palatka, June 22nd, 2017, Commission Meeting. We'll have the invocation of Reverend Carl N. Flag, Pastor of Mount Tabor First Baptist Church. At this time, will everyone please stand? Reverend Flag, you also lead us in place?
Gracious and merciful God, we come before you very humbly and sincerely thanking you for our city leaders. We thank you, God, for the legislators and administrators alike. We thank you, Lord, for our city attorney and all of those who work tirelessly, day in and day out, to enhance the quality of living in this fair city. Dear God, we thank you for our citizens, who are the individuals, day in and day out, that go up and down, to and fro, to work and to play, and those who have retired, to come together, united, to enhance our living. Lord, we ask you to bless this commission tonight, in all of their decision-making and their deliberations. Lord, bless them as they honor and recognize various citizens for accomplishments. Bless them, dear God, as they go through each and every aspect of this agenda. Help what they do onstage and offstage. Bring honor and glory to your holy and righteous name. And dear God, we will give you praise and glory and honor, both now and forever. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me as we salute our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Reverend. We also want to congratulate you on your new position. As chaplain at the Putnam County Jail, with the Sheriff's Office. So we know you're gonna do a great job and be an inspiration to many that are gonna be before you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Borman?
Present.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
Commissioner McCaskill-Williams?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Mary Lawson Brown has advised she's gonna be just a few minutes late.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the June 8th, 2017 meeting? Motion to approve?
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor, and a second is there any unread?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item one of the agenda, which are public recognitions and presentations. First, we're gonna ask Ms. Darlene Lible-Crowe to join me at this time, out in front of the dice.
This proclamation reads as follows. Whereas combined loss of vision and hearing, one of the most severe of all disabilities, affects more than a million people in the United States. Today, people who are deaf-blind or attending college, participating in social activities, managing their everyday life, and are actively engaged in their communities through employment and civic activities. And whereas the City of Palatka supports the participation of Americans with multi-sensory disabilities in our economy and community through the promotion of employment, accommodations, housing, and recreational options for deaf and blind citizens, thus maximizing their opportunities for a productive life in the community of their choice. And whereas Helen Keller was one of the most accomplished, respected, and renowned Americans, who was deaf-blind. And whereas in 1984, President Ronald Reagan issued a proclamation designating the last week of June as Helen Keller Deaf Blind Awareness Week, because it is highly appropriate and necessary to publicize the abilities and potential of our fellow citizens who are deaf-blind or severely vision and hearing impaired, and to recognize Helen Keller as a guiding example of courage, hope, determination, and achievement for others who are deaf-blind. And whereas the Helen Keller National Center for Deaf Blind Youth and Adults, HKNC commemorates the week with a national advocacy campaign to highlight the achievements and capabilities of people who are deaf and blind. The theme for 2017 is "The Power of Touch." Now therefore, I Tarrell Hill, the Mayor of the City of Palatka, Florida, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim the week of June 25th through July 1st, 2017, as Helen Keller Deaf Blind Awareness Week, in the City of Palatka. And we urge all citizens to explore the power of touch, because in this digital age, all of us can learn from the deaf-blind community and build relationships that are grounded in reality, as the best connection will always be human connection. And witness whereof, I'm here to set my hand and call to be affixed, to seal the City of Palatka, Florida's 22nd day of June, the year right over 2017, Tarrell Hill Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borman, Justin Campbell, Tammy McCaskill-Williams, Commissioners. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Thank you. Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
And my question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. No. And down. Six. Down. There you go. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Helen Keller said, optimism is faith that leads to achievement. Nothing can be done without hope and confidence. When I think of Helen Keller, I think of how she would be reacting in today's world with technology and tools that are so advanced and so empowering for those who are deaf-blind. I can imagine her, when they are presented to her, that she would be like a kid in a candy store or a toy store that never wanna leave, never wanna let go. The technology out there and the tools that are provided is an abundance and flexible to the very degrees of vision and hearing loss. For me, the technology that has been empowering for me, the Governor appointed me to a board in 2012. It's called a Florida Coordinated Council for the Deaf and the Hard of Hearing. I am on that council as an individual who is deaf-blind to represent those who are deaf-blind in Florida. On this council, majority of the members are hard of hearing or deaf. This day provides accommodation of interpreters, support service providers, and other accommodations such as CARD, which is the acronym for Communications Active Real-Time Transmission. What they do is when a captionist type into a machine, just like a court reporter, the conversation as we speak into a website where we can read on our laptop the conversation as it has been spoken. For me, since I am the only one on the council who is blind, I use a braille display with my laptop, so that I can read the conversation with my fingertips. For other advantages, like for tools, there are certain tools such as TAPZENO. I can't go into full detail, because I have not had the opportunity to experience the power of touch, but I do use it in the activities that I do throughout the day. For the Florida Coaching Council, they provide me a support service provider to side guide, relay visual information, assist in communication via voice or sign, and sometimes provide transportation. So if I raise my hand to speak, I can see the chairperson to know that they have recognized me, so that I can speak. So my XMP, they emphasize me and touches me on the shoulder with a tap and lets me know, so that I can wait, know that I will be caught on it. And then in some cases, while I am speaking, or if something is occurring, she or he will sign in my hand, hold, decide for hold to fit, or one minute, so that I can no longer see the signs and things like that. So we use the sign to do it. But TAPZENO is a way for those who are deaf-blind and rely solely on sign language to be able to communicate. For example, they will be communicating with someone, and then they stop, but they're not sure if they can continue on. So that person that they're communicating with will pat them on the knee and let them go, okay. Or they recognize what they're saying. And it is a way of giving the deaf-blind person an opportunity to interact and to reduce isolation. For in Florida, there are several organizations that provide some resources. The Florida Deaf Blind Association provides Florida Support Service Providers, and I am the program coordinator for that. We also have different other areas as well. But the State of Florida Division of Blind Services and Division of VR, the Blind Services handles division needs, and VR handles the hearing needs. They provide vocational training for those who have dual sensory loss. In this process, they also provide job placement. And in the vocational training, not only is it employment, it's education. They have reached out to all the counties in the State of Florida, to employers, to have employment opportunities for their clients. These employment opportunities can be internship and working experiences in which Division of Blind Services will pay their salary while they receive that experience on the job. Employment accommodation, whatever they need during the employment, as they were given. But anyway, what I wanted to say is, I'm gonna take this opportunity and be optimistic, so ask the City of Palatka to work with me and the State of Florida to create an employability network that will hire those who are blind, deaf, deaf-blind, and other disabled groups. Thank you.
Thank you. So let's give Ms. Lible-Crowe another round of applause. I think one of the things that we want to do is we want to make sure that we give you an opportunity to provide the wealth of information and knowledge that you have to the community as a whole. And we really want to get you in touch with our HR department. We're doing a lot of seminars to educate the community as a whole, and maybe we can get you to share some information with the community by way of a workshop, so that we can pass the word on throughout the entire county. The next recognition we have, I don't see any members from the Southeastern Conference of Seven Day Adventist Church, but I still want to make sure we speak about this event today. And there was a Proclamations Award, which talked about the Freedom March. And so the Freedom March, the Southeastern Conference of Seven Day Adventists, on last Saturday, provided a concept called the Freedom March. And I'll be the first to say it was a major surprise to me. Their campgrounds are on State Road 20, just past Johnson Crossing. And the Freedom March went from the old Central Academy High School, which is Robert H. G. K. Middle School, down Napoleon Street, back to 14th Street, and down Eagle Street, back to the school. And so we were thinking that the march was gonna be something very small, but when we got there, there were about 500 kids and 10 drum lines. There were five busloads of people who were there to march in a part of this parade. And this parade probably was as big as the Azalea Festival Parade. They had floats, they had awareness, and they were really campaigning their health care advocacy program. They were giving free medical services out at the campground, health care screenings, dental services, and all of this stuff they wanted to bring to Putnam County, but they especially wanted to highlight the City of Palatka and promote it throughout the community. They had over 100 people who were passing out flyers and information to residents as they went through the community. And they're gonna be in Putnam County until this Saturday. And so it was an awesome event, and we wanted to make sure that we recognize them. And we'll get this over to Pastor Mark Brown with the Southeastern Conference. And it says, "The City of Palatka Commission, officials greetings and congratulations on this occasion of the 2017 Southeastern Conference of Seven Day Adventists Freedom March. On behalf of the citizens of the City of Palatka, Florida, we congratulate you on your mission to promote health care advocacy and youth development, benefiting the youth of Palatka, Putnam County, Florida. Proclaim this 22nd day of June, 2017, Tarrell Hill Mayor, Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borman, Justin Campbell, Tammy M. Williams, City Manager Terry Stubbs. We just wanted to make sure that we give them a thank you on behalf of the community for coming into Palatka. They've committed to coming back and providing media services again, but also bringing their youth back to participate in other activities that we have. And so I was really excited about that. Commissioner Borman, I don't know who's more amazing, you or Commissioner Borman, but we got a chance to ride in the parade together, and it was just an awesome event.
It was certainly a hard one, just to see all of the people who cared about our community as much as we do. And they showed up in numbers. They had everything from in-rage to inhuman trafficking, end abuse. Passing that little trial, as people came out, I don't think people were expecting them in the community, but we had a number of people who came out just not knowing what was going on. They just heard the drum rolls going, and it really invigorated the community. So I certainly appreciate the Seven Day Adventists and their group for coming in and showing our community that they truly care about us. So, back over to you.
And definitely kudos to the Fire Department and Police Department also for participating in that event. And Pastor Flag, I have you know that watching those drum lines come down the road, it drew back on the little memory that I had of Palatka Central High School, when the marching band would actually go down the street and people would actually come out of their houses and do the same thing. And it was literally that same effect that we saw as a little kid watching the band come down. And they were coming out with the message that they were promoting health care. And it was just an awesome event, and it really just kind of took me back a ways. So we're also, move on to our next recognition. As a resolution supporting the Bartram Heritage Highway Designation, we're gonna ask that the Bartram Committee, along with Mr. Sam Carr, and him to have to come forward at this time. So we're gonna go ahead and ask Ms. Trigg, if she would be the resolution for it.
A resolution of the City of Palatka, Florida endorsing the official designation of the Bartram Heritage Highway, which traverses the routes traveled by John and William Bartram throughout Palatka and Putnam County during their 1765 and 1774 travel.
I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Again, thank you for the work that you do. The Bartram Festival has us all excited. We really enjoyed last week with the Greenway group coming in here, and just the fact that we now also, not only are we the Gipps City of Palatka, but we're also the Trail of Florida. And so we, not just the St. John River, but we're also the Trail of Florida. But it's just exciting the things that are going on and how the state and the nation are starting to rally around. The next race is the William Bartram. Definitely want to thank you guys for all the work that you do. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Reverend.
Back in September 2012 is when this all began. It was just a group of diehard, basically retirees, very professors and all this stuff that have just, had been an amazing group to work with. I felt very honored to work with such people that I admire so much. No, we put together plans, we developed the river trail, because we had exactly knew where Bartram had sat and talked and written about what he had seen on the river here in Putnam County. We were able to develop hiking trails, because they also went by foot from area to area too. And we developed bicycle trails, because that's one of the big things going on. Well, those are all very physical activities. Well, we said we're missing the whole group of people like me that are getting older, that sometimes may just want to get your car and drop the place. And so we decided it was time to look at, we have highways that go by almost all the sites that Bartram rode down now. And so it was just, we decided that it was time to deal with the state of Florida and look at their scenic trails program. But they also have, under that category, a heritage trail. We have the Heritage River, the St. John River, the Heritage River. And we now have our National Trail Designation with that, and all too. So we decided it was better for us to approach this as a heritage trail rather than as a scenic trail, even though it is very scenic. So we're working with Florida Department of Transportation, Dan Miller, and all. They are very good at directing us and keeping us straight. And also, the whole goal is to get the support from the community. All the service organizations have kicked in, and all. And we're just very honored that y'all have stepped up too with the resolution. I wanted to go to our next step, which will be a letter of intent to the State of Florida to develop these highways. Thank you, and again, we appreciate y'all's support. Y'all have done so much for us, and hoping that we can continue to have the excitement that it has been developing here for the last five years. It's really great to see.
We thank you guys for the vision.
Thank you.
And we thank you for making that vision a reality. Moving the agenda to our public comment section, item number two. The agenda comments under public comment will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Moving on to item three of the agenda, which is our consent agenda. Item A, Adopt Resolution Number 2017-1257, authorizing the expenditures of law enforcement trust funds in an amount not to exceed $7,500 to purchase crime prevention, community service, and recruitment supplies. B, Adopt Resolution Number 2017-12-58, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest. Exhibit A to the agreement, number ARB 57, with the State of Florida for state highway traffic signal maintenance and compensation program this year, 2017-18, for reimbursement of the cost of traffic signal maintenance. C, Adopt Resolution Number 2017-12-59, awarding a contract to Southeast Client Construction in the amount of $714,036.33, with deducted change order number one in an amount of $63,260.74 for the Booker Park Stormwater Project per results of ITB, number 2017-05. D, Adopt Resolution Number 2017-12-60, authorizing execution of the change order number two with PNS Pavement Incorporated for CDBG. CO4 Downtown Parking and Streetscape Project to add DEO waste. Decision numbers FL170140-0 and FL170191-0 issued on January 6, 2016, 2017, to the contract document. E, Adopt Resolution 2017-12-61, authorizing payment of FPL for $38,520.44 for CDBG CO4 Downtown Parking and Streetscape to convert overhead power lines to underground, contingent upon DEO review and approval of reimbursement from CDBG grant funds. F, Adopt Resolution Number 2017-12-62, authorizing the issuance of special events permit number 17-36 for the City of Palatka Independence Day, Fourth of July celebration. 7/4/17, permission to exceed allowable noise levels, fireworks display, enclosure of certain streets, as well as the public vote grant and city doc 24 hours prior to event. G, Grant permission to exceed allowable noise levels for special events permit number 17-37, Arts Council Spring and Summer Concert Series between 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM on Saturday, 6/17. Also, July 29th, August 12th, August 25th, Arts Council Greater Palatka Denise Akins Applicant. H, Appoint Jamila Diaboll to the Palatka Planning Board for the remainder of a three-year term, ending December 2017. An additional three-year term to expire December 2020, sole applicant. I, reappoint Commissioner Rufus Borman to the Putnam County Better Place Plan Oversight Committee for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2019. Are there any items on the consent agenda that we wish to have removed? Motion to approve? Thank you. There's a motion to approve by Commissioner Borman, second by Commissioner Campbell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Before we move to item number four on the agenda, I want to make sure I get an opportunity to recognize our special guest that came in the room. It's interesting, because I see one face that I haven't seen in a very long time. And so I'll introduce that young man in a second. He's got the funniest nickname in the world. But I want to invite you guys up at this time. We talked a little bit about the Freedom March, but I definitely want to get a chance to welcome my guest here from the Southeastern Conference of Seven Day Adventist Church, who are responsible for Freedom March. You missed the opportunity for me to get up and rave about the wonderful job that you guys did. Come forward, Pastor. Just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the Freedom March as a whole.
Good evening, everyone. I am David P. I am the Community Service Director for the Southeastern Conference of Seven Day Adventists. My responsibilities include community service and inner-city disaster response disabilities. And we have, our president has been encouraging us to do a big collaboration just to see about impacting, positively impacting neighbors, I mean, communities. Mayor, when, it was not by chance, it was not by coincidence when Pastor Brown and myself came in to submit the plans of asking for permission to have the parade. And the ladies that were in zoning and planning, they said, well, the mayor's outside. I won't say how they described you, little Mr. Mayor.
The slim guy.
Oh, so you know him well. But it was all in love. And from there, we were able to, it was where spirit meets fury. And from there, we just want to be able to come and be able to partner with the City of Palatka to be able to bring and do positive things with Palatka. We really do. I, to my left is Angela Berry. She is a sergeant with Miami-Dade PD. To her left is Eric Pettis. He is partner of Pettis and Dawkins Financial Group. He also, well, in fact, the gentleman that's on the far end, whom I'll share with you in a minute. I don't know his nickname. I gave him one, but I don't know his nickname. Pastor Mark Brown, Dr. Mark Brown is standing next to Eric Pettis. He is our Fanda Life Director. And would you like to introduce the other gentleman again, Mr. Mayor?
So the little guy that's over on the end there, if he could come up for a second. He is one of the Gator greats from University of Florida, although he hails from Union County. And this guy up here is Seminole, so don't take that into too seriously. But this is Gerard Warren, number three pick, NFL draft, first-round draft choice. Spent a lot of time, as a college student in Palatka, coming in and visiting our community. But it's just great to have you here, so that you know our city manager is also a Gator. And this is Gator Nation, so we definitely want to thank you. Right there from the right. And what's his nickname?
Big Money.
But Gerard is also somebody who's very involved in the community and loves to... But Gerard is also somebody who's very involved in the community and loves to give back, especially to our young people. And I just definitely wanted to make sure that we introduce you to Palack as well and let everybody know. So, let's give a round of applause.
I just want to say is, when we met, our mayor, we have a program, in fact, it's not a program, it's a movement that we call Restored Order. For those who don't know, it started from Shawn Taylor, who was a Washington Redskin. When Shawn was here, I was Shawn's pastor. And there were some things that had impacted him as a young man. In fact, Shawn and I had dinner together about a month prior to his death. And I had flown into DC. And as Shawn and I sat there in the IHOP late that night, Shawn said to me, some gentlemen became a little rowdy behind us. And Shawn said, "Pastor, I," he said, "I think it might be time for me to leave." And I said, "Shawn, what's the matter?" He said, "I don't want to be around this anymore." And so, I saw where the kid that was mine from the time he was 14 and now he is an adult now, and he's playing in NFL. And in spite of all the, a group of, how do you say it, no, of all the money, I'll put it that way, and things that he was able to come by, Shawn was still the same young man, but he was a different young man. And I never forget, he said, "It was because of the birth of his daughter Jackie." And he said, "Pastor, that's what sends me home." But when Shawn tragically lost his life, what we have, what we have done is we have begun a movement where we're seeking to impact people in their communities so that people will notice that in spite of some things that have happened in your life, everybody deserves a second chance. And so, just as I heard Michael Wilbon and Kyle Cowell say on the NFL Network in regards to Shawn, they said, "Like a old rug, you can't get all the stains out." And they said, "Order cannot come out of chaos." And I said, "The devil is alive." And so, hence, we have started a movement called Restored Order, of which everyone you see standing here, Pastor Brown and myself, we took the ride from South Miami on the bicycle, from South Miami up to DC in collaboration with the Redskins. This time, we're starting in Washington DC and we're riding back to Miami. And we're doing that come August the 13th. And we are doing it not only to raise awareness, but to raise funds in order so that we will be able to come to Palack and other places just like Palack and make a positive impact. And so, we just want you to know that if you have a partner in us, Mr. Mayor, you do, you have a partner in us. And there's so much more that could be said, but I'll take a step back unless you want me to take a text.
I have something to say. Mayor Hill is always putting us out. He has a bike that he purchased and he has not used as of yet, so.
You're working on probably recognizing.
I'll pay the shipping.
In Mayor Hill's defense, he did on Saturday say that he is going to start riding when he saw our bikes. And he said, "Just in a short time, he's gonna get out there, you already purchased the bike, and he's ready to go."
I worked out twice this week just for that. And we want to make sure we share this proclamation with you. It says, "Proclamation, City of Palack and City Commission. Official greetings and congratulations on this occasion of the 2017 Southeastern Conference of Seventh-day Adventists Freedom March. On behalf of the citizens of the City of Palack of Florida, we congratulate you on your mission to promote healthcare advocacy and youth development benefiting the youth of Palack of Putnam County, Florida, proclaimed on this 22nd day of June 2017. Terry Little, Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Moore, Justin Campbell, Tammy M. Williams, and City Manager Terry Suggs." Going back to the agenda, we'll go to item number four, resolution supporting the adequate funding of the low-income home energy assistance program. And this is to adopt, Jim Bush from FPL.
A resolution of the City of Palack of Florida supporting adequate funding of the Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program for Miami.
Second. There's much on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions, call all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Call, this motion carries unanimously. Mr. Bush, you want to come up? You can, you want to come up and talk a little bit about the program? It's always a pleasure to have you here. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jim Bush. I'm a local manager for Florida Power and Light. Just like to thank the Mayor Hill, city commissioners in the City of Palack overall. Just to have a brief statement to make. LEHAP stands for Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program, which is funded by federal dollars. This program goes back to the early 1980s and is administered by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. LEHAP is a block grant program that enables a state to basically set its own course on how funding is used. The only hard rule from the feds is that the funds be used for households with incomes at or below 150% of the poverty level. In Florida, the program is managed by the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. A few relevant facts about LEHAP that may be of interest to you. The need for payment assistance far outweighs available funding. We estimate that about 8% of eligible households actually receive help. LEHAP is the primary source for energy payment assistance. Federal FEMA funds are also occasionally used for energy bills. LEHAP funding in Florida has been steadily decreasing from the peak funding of $129 million in 2010 to just $63 million in 2017. Many local nonprofit organizations also lend a helping hand to pick up the slack, but I'm sure we'll all agree that their budgets are already stretched and can better be utilized in other areas. Florida and most other Sunbelt states have been shorted in their receipt of LEHAP funding based on congressional action that overrides the formula, the law, that should be used for LEHAP dispersions. The two-tier formula uses state population, cooling and heating degree, days, and energy prices, and when applied correctly, is dynamic and not reasonable to all states. The problem arises when Congress chooses to override this formula, thereby granting inadequate funding to the Sunbelt states and excessive funding to the cold-weather states. Consider the following two facts. Florida, with the population now exceeding 20 million, gets about the same LEHAP funding as Connecticut, a state with a population of less than 4 million. Florida has recently passed New York State as the third-most populous state, but New York received over $325 million in 2017 versus just $63 million for Florida. This allows Florida to serve about 45% of their eligible households compared to less than 10% for Florida. LEHAP supporters say that 2014 alone, the latest year of LEHAP data available, the program kept millions of families warm, hundreds of thousands cool, and helped 1.7 million avoid termination in building facilities. That's a pretty big footprint. To close, remember that the problem is congressional action that by design overrides LEHAP funding. Our objective is for Florida municipalities and counties to band together with these LEHAP resolutions so Florida can be heard. LEHAP funding needs to be allocated as long as it takes so that warm-weather states, which means people in need locally, will rightfully receive their fair share. Thanks. Thanks so much.
Any questions, Colonel? We definitely want to thank you for being here and we definitely enjoy all that you do, and we thank you for providing this program for us. Thank you, sir. Item five of the agenda, city manager and administrative report. Mr. Griffin's here.
No, he is, he's out with Mrs., here she comes. Ms. Mandy Tucker is going to handle the item on the agenda, of course. She was the majority, she was the primary grant writer on the project.
Ms. Tucker, if you could come forward at this time, and also, Mr. Toriano, if you could join Ms. Tucker up at this time. What have you guys presented item five there?
So, the, sorry, the City of Palack recently was awarded a cost-share grant partnership with the St. John's River Water Management District for the amount of 1.1 million for beneficial water reuse. Basically, what we're going to do inside the program is create a spray field adjacent to the water waste management treatment plant. It's about 250 acres. We are going to upgrade the chemical pump at the reclaimed water at the golf course as well as add a rotary vacuum filtration system. What that will do is ensure that the reclaimed water is of decent quality to be used for irrigation by our current customers.
So, standing behind you also is from St. John's River Water Management District, Mr. Jim Toriano. Mr. Toriano, we definitely want to thank the district and also the board for receipt of this award, for the great partnership and support both in the past and the future. And we want to give you the floor at this time, just to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, and city staff. What a great project that was put together. Our staff liked it a lot. Obviously, our governing board liked it even more, and we're in the very top percentile for scoring. So, these are projects that we're looking for. We want to improve on the four areas that we truly have as our mission statement. And the City of Palack continues to provide those projects to us, and we're here to help, as I mentioned just before the meeting, anything our staff can do to look at these applications, to give guidance on how they may be crafted in a certain way to score higher, we're certainly willing to do that. And a message from our executive director and our governing board to both you, Mr. Mayor, and to the city manager, thank you all for being at the governing board meeting. It meant a lot. We had many elected officials and appointed staff that were there. It really made an impact for our governing board, and it truly showed a partnership that we're working on and collectively moving in that right direction to include Tater Farms, a private organization here, and that city private, public-private partnership. So, we really appreciate the City of Palack, your staff, for a job well done, and we look forward to working on projects in the future.
Yes. And for those of you who didn't realize what Ms. Tucker was saying, we just received a $1.1 million grant for a reuse project that's going to save this community at the peak of this program, 900,000 gallons of water per day from potable water that can be, that's been used. And so, it's an awesome project. It is a job well done by both Ms. Tucker and Mr. Griffin to get this done, and we definitely want to salute you and.
Thank you.
To be able to conserve roughly 337 million gallons of water over the course of a year at the peak of a program is an awesome feat, particularly for a community this size. And we think that, and in the partnership with Tater Farms, with 130 acres that they have, along with the adjacent property at the wastewater treatment plant, and to be able to get rid of the nutrients that we have in the potable water systems now, I mean, in our reclaimed water systems now, to be able to get the college, the school district, the jail, and other entities back online, it's a major. Yes, and Rumeen Gardens, it's a major project. And so, we're definitely excited about this project, and we're excited about the relationship with the district, and we want to make sure that we thank you guys for all that you've done for this community.
And I will take that message back to our district and our director and the governing board.
Any comments from the commissioner?
I'm good, sir. I'm appreciative of, that's basically a gift for us. I mean, we need anything we can get as it relates to our infrastructure and our water. To pass this other $25 million project on that we have for 62 miles of pipe that need to be replaced, as well as our wastewater treatment facility, I would certainly appreciate whatever else you can do to help.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to echo on what the commissioner's saying, we have a ready program, our Rural Economic Development Initiative. We're going to come up for a grant process in September, and then in March, we'll open up our cost-share application process again for the city to compete, and hopefully with our cooperation, score very well. But you're looking at money potential by December of this year, and again in June of next year, for true projects, as the mayor said, that will truly give back to us and help us conserve our water and be better stewards. So, looking forward to that.
Certainly appreciate it. We did make it up through the House side, but we didn't get on the Senate side, so it was a major progress. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Just want to say thank you again. It means a lot to see things like this happening. It's not, it doesn't just benefit us, it benefits everyone in the City of Palack and Palack. So, again, thank you so much for the work that you all do. And again, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say thank you to Jim. We go back a long way from the Lottos County days, City of Gainesville days. It's great to have him in the position that he's in at the Water Management District because it brings a familiar face and someone that will certainly support the rural initiatives that we're working on here. So, Jim, welcome to Palack.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I really appreciate that. I feel like a true person here in this community. I'm here every day, I'm going to your restaurants, and certainly giving back to this community. So, I feel like I'm a member of this community, and I really appreciate that. Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. We're going to move the agenda. We're going to do our administrative reports at this time. Chief, you have anything?
Yes, sir. Black Police Department, we've been doing a lot of things this part of the summer. We had a couple of different events that we had opportunity to speak at within the summer camps, not only with Palack, going out to Palack and speaking at Palack Summer Camp, but also with the FIRE program out at the college that we went out and spoke at today. We also had the opportunity to do Black Fire Cleanup this Saturday, which was a very good cleanup. We had a lot of people turn out and support our efforts to clean up the North Side area, starting with 19th Street over to 11th Street. So, those are a couple of things we want to say thank you for, and the opportunity for our staff and getting out, as well as the fire department staff and other city personnel getting out and cleaning up those areas. And so, again, as well as open trails. And again, it was an event that was something that we, that's much needed and is much appreciated. In previous meetings, if I could, if I have a Capitol force like come up for me, please. I'm going to have to make this banner white for me.
If you better have more hair.
In previous meetings, Mayor Hill, as well as Commissioner Brown, has announced in reference to the article that appeared in Quality Cities Magazine. We were very appreciative and thankful of that article, and although we didn't have enough copies to get to all the offices of the police department, we wanted to be able to have something, to present something so they could share and appreciate it. So, the police department, we went out and we got the article, put on a plaque, put on a plaque for, to be displayed in the lobby area for all to see when they come to the police department, to be able to read and know about the accomplishments that we achieved over the last year and look to continue to achieve in the near future.
Great job, Captain. Assistant Chief Grimes. Mr. Crowe.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, really quickly, we have two items that are continuing through July meetings, which are the PVDs, the Crystal Cove RV Park, and the Racetrack PVD. So, they're on schedule for July. There'll probably be a lot of people here, it'll be busy, just give you a heads up. We met earlier this week with representatives from Planet Fitness, who are looking at opening the Storm Black out on Reed Street before 19 during the due diligence phase. So, it's not certain, but they feel pretty good about it. So, we had a good representation from our departments, met with them, and answered all their questions. Other than that, everything's going great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Jim.
As you know, we had a little incident out at the airport, not an accident, this past Sunday. And in case somebody saw an image on, I believe it was Channel 47, they took a picture of the airplane sitting on the airfield through a fence that had recently been torn down by some kids out drag racing in the industrial park area. So, I just saw a picture today. I didn't see the article, but just in case somebody saw, I think it was Channel 47, an airplane did not crash through the fence, so kind of getting out of the airfield. Somebody lost control on a landing. The picture was really bad. The picture looked really bad, and then just want to straighten that out.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Holmes. Mr. Reynolds. Striggers.
I distributed some material from Ms. Robinson. And she said that you all mentioned it last meeting. It's material concerning the AmerisBank financial training. And we've also got a help there coming up. Just for your information.
So for informational purposes, we've got a Better You Healthy Heart and Living Training through Florida Blue in the City of Palacka on June 29th, 2017, from 12:00 PM to 1:00 PM at the Price Market Center, 220 North 11th Street. For more information, contact Deborah Robinson at 329-0100, extension 218. And also, something that we're doing with our staff and also with our interns for the summer, we've got a financial literacy training on July 20th, 2017, in the commission room here at City Hall, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Everyone involved will learn more about budgeting, debt control, understanding credit, financial independence, managing student finances, and creating savings plans. So those are things that we're doing overall to empower everyone within the city. And so we definitely thank Ms. Robinson for bringing the programs forward. Also Commissioner Campbell for his work that he's done with the interns. Had an opportunity on yesterday at our shift meeting to have two of our interns come in and present. Let the record reflect, Commissioner Brown is here two minutes before we close.
Timing was perfect.
Get here on time, get here.
I have something I need to tell you all, probably. I told you about.
You got to say here first.
Here.
After 34 years, you can come when you want.
But the young man from the Post, Washington Post came. And last Sunday, they sent a photographer here. And I took him around to take pictures of the City of Palacka. I tried to take him to everything we have.
Did you lock him in?
Yeah. I blocked the charge for you, he told me, when I get to him. So we should be getting some positive. One thing he took was he took some pictures of Central Academy. I didn't fuss too much because it might mean that we get some help from somebody else to redo it. But I took him from Central to Jenkins so that he saw the replacement school for Central, even though it's in the way it is. And I asked him to tell his editor, we looking for funding to help redo that school for Central.
Did you just sprint here to get to this meeting?
Yes. Yes, I had something I had to do. And they told me it wouldn't take but 10 minutes, and it took all of 45.
You're fine.
I did read my things. I know what y'all get. I'll check them out on the computer, and you'll get them. If you didn't do right, you'll get the message next time.
That's a needless mistake, you're my daughter. Mr. Suggs.
Just, you know, just great that we were able to get the $1.1 million. Great work by Jonathan and Mandy in the back. You know, Mandy keeps going above and beyond, and appreciate that. And the recognition tonight for the police department. It's just great stuff happening in City of Palacka, so that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
My only thing I have to say is, the Florida Greenways and Trails, I had an awesome time with you all. I mean, an awesome time from the fellowship with individuals from around Palacka, I mean, from around the state, to going out on the riverboat and actually learning while out. That evening was definitely one to remember. And thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you do. Had a conversation with one of the gentlemen there that we're going to try to do some things to get kids a little bit more involved on the trails. So I'm committed to that. And again, if there's anything that I can do, let me know, and I'm willing to do so. Also, to the Southern Conference, I apologize that I was not there, but I was there because several individuals went live on Facebook. For the first time for something good. And that really meant a lot to me, just to see that you all have taken Palacka as if it was your own. And if, again, there's anything that I can do personally, and I know I speak for the commission when I say that, that let us know. Together, we can achieve more. And with the closed fist, we can knock out a whole lot of things. So again, let's bring that, continue to bring that synergy. We are no longer that dying city. We are actively that what's happening city. So I'm done.
Top deck, Commissioner Cassie Williams.
I have nothing to say.
She's quiet. Mr. Borum.
I'm just still riding on the high. I really like to thank everybody for all the contributions, what they've done. I love that they've shown, Mandy, for her continued efforts with the grants that she's continuously helped to bring to the city, to get monies, to do major projects. Certainly thank you for all you do. We also like to thank FPNL with the group, LaHee, things that our city so, so much needs in terms of helping our community because we're definitely below the, you know, about 40-plus percent below the poverty level. So we really need those funds to help with energy programs. Like to thank the Southeastern Conference for, again, taking our city, caring about our city, and again, having the youth play a major part in helping to help restore our community in terms of caring for it, reducing crime, violence, human trafficking, and the whole. Now, passing out all that literature, that meant a whole lot to our community. I think the Greenways and Trails spent the whole day with them from 2:00 o'clock to 9:00 o'clock. That was a major deal, everything from the trip from Palacka to back on the boat. So again, we'd like to thank everybody for all that they did, contributed. Our police and fire department, for all their contributions. Our whole staff, I mean, we just constantly go above and beyond for our community. We love this place, and we're going to continue that energy. So we thank you for all you do.
I thank you, Mr. Borum, thank everybody that we can thank. But I just want to say, just behold how good and how pleasant it is for brotherly, well-together immunity. When you look at the things that are happening in this community, it's because there's a unified force that's here that's allowing Palacka to prosper. People are starting to see what the gem of the St. John's River is all about. You know, the hub of trails for the state of Florida. You know, the Southeastern Conference coming in and being a partner. That's SCC, you realize that? So not the SCC, but even the Southeastern Conference, everything we do, we're starting to see this thing work out. But we're just really excited. You know, I want to make sure that I recognize Ms. Electric Kitchen's in the back, who's always at every meeting. You know, there are very few citizens who are always involved. And, you know, she's former city commissioner, but when she left her post, she did not leave her city. And we just want to thank you for that. We want to applaud you for the work that you do. Again, it's the summer. It's the greatest time to be on the St. John's River. And we just want to welcome everybody here. We want to continue to work together. And so with that being said, by motion, we are adjourned.